...of Judge Allen. Welcome, glad you're here. And do manage your bag.
So I'm just gonna turn over, we have Jeff Perry here who's the city's court administrator, and I believe Judge Kip Leonard will do an evaluation of the judge, and then the judge is gonna come up for a conversation with you, so that'll take pretty much the whole work session. So I'm gonna invite them up to the table, and I'm gonna step away and be right over there.
Ready?
All right.
So the first of the two is the first part that we're gonna do is the judicial evaluation committee report.
So, all right, thank you. Again, I'm Jeff Perry, I'm the court administrator. Judge Kip Leonard's here today with me, he's one of the committee members, and he will be presenting the report to you today on Judge Allen's performance for the last four years. Just as a reminder, the committee this year included Judge Leonard, Dan Neal, an attorney practicing in municipal court, Hazerbedian, the public defender, Kathy Cunningham from Springfield Municipal Court, the court administrator there, and Ray Dean Cuff, our representative from the Human Rights Commission. With that, I'll hand it off to Judge Leonard.
Thank you.
Welcome Judge.
Thank you. I drew the short straw.
Well, we appreciate you serving.
Yeah. So they dragged me out of retirement to do this. Thank you for the opportunity to give you a summary of the evaluation that our committee performed through the help of the municipal court staff of Judge Allen. And we reviewed court statistics, customer service surveys. There were two judicial surveys. The first survey was a survey of defense attorneys, prosecutors, interpreters, and advocates, police traffic officers, other judges and court staff. And the second survey was a survey, a human rights survey. There was about a 26 percent return on the first survey. There were no responses to the survey that was offered to the human rights community. The survey and its results are, I believe, included in your packet, and I'm not going to attempt to go through all of the information that is there, I think it is self-explanatory. The questions were questions that were developed in consideration with the court staff, and also using national guidelines for the administration and the performance of courts generally. We took a look at that, we had discussions within the committee, and then we had the opportunity at our last meeting to meet with Judge Allen, to listen to his observations and concerns about court, about where it is, what has happened in the last four years, where he believes the court is currently, and anticipating what may lie ahead for the court and the city. We found that in the reviewing the results of the survey, that the results were very strongly supported Judge Allen and his work. About 85 percent of the survey respondents either agreed or strongly agreed that Judge Allen is doing a good job. And I should mention that Judge Allen presides over municipal court, but he also has retained the services of a number of associate judges, and that'll be something that perhaps he can discuss in a little bit more detail, if the council has questions about that. In discussing the situation, the current situation with Judge Allen for Eugene Municipal Court, he noted a couple of issues that are, have an effect upon the administration of the court system. One is the need for additional jail beds. And that's not an issue that is new to either municipal court, or to circuit court, or probably most courts in this state. And that also relates to the second issue, and that's budget issues and possible reductions. And again, that is an issue that all courts are facing, and every municipality and other governmental agency probably has to face the same issues. There was a discussion in our meeting with Judge Allen of the achievements of the court and the future of the court. There were a couple of items that were brought out as particular note as far as achievements. One of the programs that Judge Allen and the court initiated was an amnesty program to collect money that was already sent to collection by way of unpaid fines. It resulted in about $130,000 in revenue to the city. There is an issue with the downtown public safety zone, I'm not gonna comment on that, that's your issue. And the technology issue concerning court administration, and trying to move the municipal court into become a paperless court. And I can tell you in listening to that discussion, and having a significant amount of knowledge of the state court system, that the municipal court system is light years ahead of what we're doing at the state level, so I think you should be proud of what is going on there. And again, those are issues that are going to be impacted by the budget issues that you face, but I can certainly offer my perspective in that what the court is geared to do and prepared to do will make the court more efficient, should it be able to institute all of the technological changes that it would like to, and use the existing technology. The committee, and it's, I think we had four meetings, am I right Jeff? Four meetings, and so we discussed over the period of time, the issues that we thought were relevant, either by way of survey, or issues that were brought to us in any other matter. And the committee was unanimous in its position that Judge Allen's contract should be extended, and that Judge Allen is doing an excellent job as the municipal court judge. With that, if Jeff has additional comments, or if you have questions regarding committee work, you can direct them to me. Otherwise, issues or questions about the operation of the court really are best directed to, either to Jeff Perry or to Judge Allen.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think Judge Leonard covered it. You know, as with any operation in the city, you know, budget is always a big concern. You know, we've made our reductions, I think we've suggested accordingly, and we're okay where we're at today, but in the future, if, you know, things pick up, and you know, we see more citations coming in and that sort of thing, it'll be very challenging for our staff to meet those demands. I think that's just with the rest of the organization as well. I would add, as far as jail beds goes, we are in discussions with Springfield, in fact, talked to them today, and it looks very positive that we will be able to lease beds from their facility. It'll be, you know, timing will be a big factor, and that'll be our next discussion with them, how we can implement those. But there could be a huge benefit to, you know, additional beds in Springfield for the municipal court.
That's good to hear. I guess I will just start out this round by saying how much I appreciate you Judge, for being willing to serve on this committee, and Mr. Neal, and Hazerbedian, and Kathy Cunningham, and Ray Dean Cuff, right? And I want to publicly thank them all for taking the time and effort to do this. I have to say, I can't, I think we should all be pretty pleased with the results that we saw from the survey and from the work that you all did. So I'm gonna open it up for questions, or, one that I have is, do you think, George? One question I did have is, you said you didn't get any response from the human rights community.
And so I can explain that process a little bit.
Okay.
So we came up with the idea of expanding the survey from what we've done in the past. 2006, 2007, or 2002 and 2006 were pretty consistent, where we looked at this, you know, pretty consistent set of standards, issued a very similar survey. Things are new, consistency is important, you know, when you look at reference and so on. But we realized that there could be definitely some benefit to reaching out beyond the attorneys and the staff and the judges that we survey. And so we decided the most appropriate place to do that would be to send, we sent a link with an online tool, Survey Monkey, and so we sent a link to the Human Rights Commission, asking them if they had experiences, or if they felt there were individuals in the community they represented that would have any experience with municipal court, positive or negative. We simply did not get any responses to the survey. And so we were hoping to get some feedback. I think you could take it a lot of different ways. I'd like to think that's positive, that we aren't getting negative feedback, and so...
Well, it may be that we need to think a bit about how we ask and what we ask from them in terms, because they, if it feels to them like they're being asked about their experience, they may not have necessarily direct experience. And then, of course, how they would get information from, unless somebody was very unhappy and came to the Human Rights Commission, that would be, I just have to, I think we probably should be talking with them and thinking about how they could be useful in this discussion, not to beg the question to find somebody unhappy, but actually to see, just to get a little sense of what's out there. Yeah, yeah. Andrea.
Well, just in response to your question, Mayor, you know, in '06 and '02, the Human Rights Commission still did the police work. And so that might be something that you might wanna look at if they're gonna continue, because they used to have advocates that would actually work with police cases. So they actually had experience of going to court with their people that complained about the police or about the judges. And so if they're not doing that, then maybe they're not the best folks to be, to be a part of this. I would think the CRB might be a good place to see if there's somebody interested in participating four years from now. Personally, I would think, because they are reviewing cases, and they are looking at how they're, and they would have more working knowledge, in my opinion. Not that the HRC, I know that Matt Beechey is trying to resurrect the, the, these human rights advocates, I forgot what the acronym was for that, but they, you know, they're looking to try and reinvigorate that, but I'm, we have our conversation about boards and commissions, if maybe that advocacy program could lie someplace else also. Because I still think there's a need for it. I mean, I hear anecdotally that people don't understand the judicial system or when they get cited, and they're laypeople, and they don't have money for an attorney, then it's challenging for them to understand the system. And I think that's where a lot of the complaints are, you know, from the police, I mean, that just adds to that level of confusion. So I was just curious, I'm looking at the paperwork that you gave us, and maybe this is a, maybe you have a research for this, on back page of this page, this longer, that has all the Eugene ordinances, are the ones that are listed that have between 4.8721G and 4.8721H, are those all around the downtown mall, or are those just like any mall?
Those are, those are specific to downtown.
Okay, and then, so I'll ask one question.
So I would just add, I'm not, I'm sorry.
And then I also had a question about the jail beds. Springfield, is there gonna be a cost savings associated with contracting those beds over there?
Definitely. We currently, we pay the county $117.31 per bed per year, we have 15 beds, $117 a day basically. And Springfield, we can procure those beds for $75 per bed. Now, keep in mind, they are, they're a different type of, a different type of jail.
Well, I understand that, and so the medically frail, people with mental health, pregnant women, that kind of a scenario, women in general, okay. So won't be, won't be turd to go over there. Okay, great, thanks.
Do you have something you wanted?
I was, I was just gonna add, the one thing that occurred to me through the survey process is, we also do a customer service satisfaction survey annually, and in the court, just court staff does it. And we survey 2,000 defendants every year, and it occurred to us through this process that we could expand that. I don't think we have a Spanish specifically survey.
That'd be good.
So I think there's some things that we could do, just ongoing, even outside of the judicial evaluation, we could reach out to some of the groups that we have.
Allen?
Judge Kip, real quick, please, let's stick on that, ma'am.
Yeah, I'll call on you right after Allen here, George.
Thank you. Thank you.
Judge Leonard, thanks for doing this, and thanks to the other folks that were doing this. I know it's a community service that's very much appreciated. And it's, and you guys did a very thorough job. And there's actually not much to say, because the results and conclusions you came to, fortunately, there's not many issues or problems, especially with Judge Allen's performance, so I don't really have that many questions. Most of mine are related to asking the judge questions, so I'll talk to them then. But on the jail beds, I know Springfield is cheaper, but it's a much more limited facility, so it's only really healthy males that can go there, either mentally or physically healthy. And so what percentage of the folks that we incarcerate fit in that category? Off the top of your head?
Anecdotally.
You know, I'm not sure as far as healthy versus mentally ill individuals, I'm not sure. We actually, we're looking at some of those statistics now, but I wanna say, women to men, it's maybe one to every five, and maybe even less, but somehow that rings a bell. I'd have to, I'd have to run the numbers again. So, so from a capacity standpoint, what we're looking at doing is utilizing Springfield beds for sentenced offenders, so they come in, they're through, they could be sentenced over to Springfield City, so hold them over there, we have a lot of power control, but that doesn't mean that you wouldn't have sentenced offenders still in the county jail, that we would have, you know, the ability to put them over there. And I think there'd be some, some real benefit to that, because we could get more beds.
George?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the judicial evaluation committee, well, especially Judge Leonard, good to see you here and served.
Good to see you, wherever you are.
I do have a question, and I don't know if this is to be directed more to Jeff or to Judge Allen, it's about the associate judges. What criteria do we use to select, or does Judge Allen do it, or Jeff, do you do it, to select the associate judges? And what type of background and training are we looking for in those folks?
I prefer that question until Judge Allen speaks. He has told us what's going on with the, with the associate judges.
It sounds like that question would be better asked to the judge, George.
Okay, very good. I'll wait to, thank you.
Okay. George Brown?
Thank you. Thanks very much for the information, it's a really good report. I just had a couple of questions, well, actually, the first one's not so much a question, I was just wanting to reference the second survey being sent to the Human Rights Commission. Don't give up on them, do it again next year. They've kind of been in a tremendous flux from the last year, 10 members resigned, and there had been controversy on, within the commission before that, and it's lots of turmoil, and things are calmed down now, it's a great, it's a great new crew, and they're ready to go. And they're going to, my understanding is that one thing they wanna do is get some, you know, volunteers, and resurrect the advocacy segment of the commission, and do a court watch. Not so much to keep an eye on the court, it's not a question of the integrity of the judges or the system itself, but just to kind of track cases and see if there's trends. You know, regarding homeless people, or like that, you know, and just to spot trends of what kind of cases are going to the court, how are they being adjudicated, what's happening, are people, you know, are they getting adequate representation? It's not accusatory, it's just observe, just to observe. So I think that maybe next year you might get a different response. And I did have a couple of questions about the jail beds. The city had, we have 15 beds, is, I believe, currently. So is the idea to keep those 15, and get whatever we can afford to get extra in Springfield?
Yes, the, well, and I should clarify that. So we have 15 beds that were funded, we have funding for it in the county, we are, for the most part, establish the funding for 10 additional beds in Springfield. Part of that consideration will be looking at the overall number of beds. So we'll have 25 total beds between both jails and... ...up front of the county, and shift them all to Springfield, and we'll achieve some savings, but we'll also be able to hold more sentenced offenders that way. And so we'll have to look at that, and that's, that was kind of the reference I made earlier to the type of offenders, and who's in the beds, and, you know, because you can lose people right, right off the bat, when they're, you know, arrested and taken into custody, and they could be released so fast that we never have the opportunity to sentence them. So there's kind of this fine line between, you know, we need them there long enough, so we can sentence them, but we also know, you know, we just have to look at those numbers.
And then you need a place for them to go once they are sentenced, too.
Yeah.
Because if you don't have any place, there's, what's the point of sentencing them? So, and these new beds are funded, where's the money gonna come from, or renting from Springfield?
Well, so we're working, we've had some discussions with police, and, and there's a vacancy that we might be able to lay on over there, I'm afraid to speak on behalf of the BPD, but, and then we have some efficiencies we've made in the court, where I think we can, we can utilize part of that. And, and a piece of it is also just the savings, if we can shift some of the beds from the county to Springfield, we could, gosh, I think that was almost $30,000 we could save. So, and a bed in Springfield is about $27,000 a year compared to $42,000 if you count...
Yeah, it looks like it's just roughly about 30 percent cheaper. So that's, that's very significant in almost any endeavor. Okay, well, yeah, because we're gonna need more beds, because we've, you know, the urban renewal ordinance that was passed recently, it's gonna provide for eight new officers downtown, which is basically co, the expanded version of downtown is coterminous with beat number two. So presumably, there'll be more, well, there'll be more crime prevention, first of all, but presumably, there'll also be a lot more arrests, so there'll be, will be more people coming through, going through the court. And then presumably, again, some of them will need to be sentenced and put somewhere if we don't have any beds, there's, there's no point in having all the new officers, and I mean, it's all part of a piece. That was one thing that, just a personal side that has upset me a little bit about that whole thing, was it didn't provide for jail beds. New police, but no jail beds. Maybe we can take care of that. Okay, I guess that's...
Sarah, I was just gonna add to that, if you remember when you adopted the downtown safety plan, there was the 10 points in the plan, part of it was hiring new officers, part of it was adding the 10 jail beds. So police is repurposing some of their existing funds, and trying to find new ways to do business so that they can achieve those savings and buy those beds. So it's all part of the downtown safety plan, it was meant to be integrated.
Have we voted for it?
Right.
Right, I recall that. Can we be kept apprised of the actual, the balance sheets and stuff as we go along?
Sure.
Has it decided, did it Springfield or Lane County where we buy those beds?
I don't think it's been totally locked in.
So the only other question I had about that is just some kind of, and it doesn't, you don't have to answer now, but I'd be interested in, there's gotta be some impact on the, I mean, the county struggle to get enough money to pay for beds, to keep enough beds open, I mean, that sort of lever thing, I don't know what effect using the Springfield beds will have on that, so I'd like...
They're additional, I think if you remember, yeah, I can't remember what the exact number is, but you remember, in order to do the beds at Lane County, you have to open a whole dormitory.
Right.
Because of the way it's designed, so you can only get, you know, to open more beds, you have to open a lot more beds, so trying to find that balance between what we buy from the county and what we buy from Springfield to make it all work for everybody is really what they're trying to hit, it's not...
That's what I'd like to understand, we, yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can send you an update on that.
And Betty, and then Chris, and...
Thanks. I guess this is a suggestion as much as a question. Did you survey the ACLU people? I think that might be an appropriate group, too.
And we, we just sent it to the Human Rights Commission, and so...
ACLU would have a more long-term knowledge and involvement, and you might ask Carol Urquhart Caldwell to give her opinion. I understand she's been watching the court voluntarily. As far, do people get a, they don't get a choice, of course, that's a ridiculous question, of which jail they go to. I just wanna say, if I have to go to one, I wanna go to Eugene, I think.
We'll keep that in mind.
It's now in record.
At this point, I don't have a choice.
What happens to all those empty beds, this just occurred to me, it's not, it's really not relevant right now, but, hey, we could give them to homeless people. Open up a dormitory for homeless people.
Empty beds?
Yeah.
We'll take that input.
Okay, thank you, that's all. Chris?
Thanks. I, just, an observation, kind of building off what George was talking about in terms of downtown, and maybe a little bit of field, but since we're talking about jail beds, it may fit, was the notion that, you know, the initiative had increased officers and also increased beds. Something I would be curious about, which is, kind of got me thinking, would be, with the increased police presence, that may lead to more arrests, but it also may lead to greater deterrence. In other words, my hope would be that having more officers down there would deter more crime, and therefore you wouldn't need the beds, and that money might be reallocated or reapportioned. I know there's a real interest in trying to extend out into the neighborhoods if possible. So whatever savings we could realize through increased deterrence downtown, that didn't have to go into beds or adjudication, might be able to be retasked in a more effective way. So it would be good to be able to look at all the options, in terms of how that, how that interconnection might work.
Allen?
When we do that analysis on the jail beds, you know, one of the things I, that I would like to consider when we're doing that is the financial position of the county. And while it might be caught more cost-effective to buy the jail beds from Springfield, there's a trade-off there. And I understand the issue about opening a block, and my kind of leaning right now is to purchase them from Lane County, because they need the revenue from us more than the Springfield jail does. So having that as a kind of backdrop context is something I would look, look at when we have that conversation.
Sort of a tension between revenue and revenue, right?
What I'm taking from this is just that you're gonna wanna see the analysis of how that all plays out, and you can make a choice.
And I'm gonna suggest, sort of, as we move our way to the end of this particular conversation, that before we do the next evaluation, that we probably wanna circle back and make sure that we've spent some time thinking about this issue of who we wanna ask, and whether we can improve our input in any way, and so, when it's appropriate. Yeah. And I would actually like to ask Judge Leonard if there is anything that we, he thinks that we could do to improve the evaluation that we're, that we're doing.
I think the evaluation is, is complete. One of the difficulties, I think, that city government has when municipal court is part of city government, is remembering that there are three branches of government, and that the judicial branch is to be separate and independent. And it gets into, it's a bit of a dicey situation when the legislative branch, the city council, has authority by way of budget and appointment of, over the judiciary, but I would just remind the, remind the council that there is that distinction, and there is that separation between the legislative, the executive, and judicial branch. And the judicial branch needs to be independent. And you get into issues that I am not well-versed in, that really touch on executive and legislative functions as far as passing ordinances, appropriation of money, that is not a judicial function, and it's one that you expect the court to be able to accept, and then to implement, to rule upon, but a judge is not... But a judge is not, is not, a counselor, a judge is not part of the executive branch. And I think that what you need to be looking at as far as the evaluation of Judge Allen is whether the court system is able to remain independent and to make decisions. And I guess I'll be presumptuous enough, since I'm sitting here and have the microphone, just to, and this really, I step away from my role as.
You were invited to.
Thank you. And if you want to cut me off, that's fine. I'll step, step away from my position as somebody representing the committee to just give you my personal perspective. And I've been practicing law, I've been a judge for 35 years, and I just retired from the circuit bench. And as part of my experience, I was an assistant city prosecutor for a period of time. I was an assistant associate municipal court judge for a time before I went to the state bench. And so I've had an opportunity to appear in front of Judge Allen as a lawyer. I've worked with him as a judge. And then be in the community, the judicial community within the city of Eugene and Lane County. And there are a number of circuit judges who also have the same experience, having been municipal judges. And I know we share the same opinion because I've talked with them about that and that we all find that Judge Allen is one of the finest judges in this community, whether it's a municipal judge, whether it's a circuit judge. And I have mentioned this before when I've been in this position, but I can tell you that throughout my career as a circuit judge, and I think we all do this as judges, we sometimes have difficult situations and we're kind of thinking, what am I going to do? And then you think, well, how did Judge so-and-so do this when I was a lawyer? And I have found over my career, more often than not, I thought, how did Judge Allen handle these situations? And I think that that's a, that's an extraordinary compliment. And I know that I speak for Judge Bearden and Judge Billings on the circuit bench who were judges here, who feel the same way about, about Judge Allen. So I'm sorry if I stepped over the bound a little bit, but I think the perspective might be helpful.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
One more comment. I know you retired, Judge Leonard, but I just wanted to thank you for your years of service on the, George, on the court, because I think it's a much better place having, and better system having had you there.
Thank you. I had to go to YouTube this morning to learn how to die again. Such problems we should have. Yeah.
Thank you very much. It was very thorough.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, now we welcome Judge Allen. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. Thanks for inviting me. The report, I just saw the report yesterday for the first time because I was, because I was out of town last week. But I had a few comments on the report and then I thought there'd be some questions and expect some questions. So the first thing that struck me was the downtown public safety zone. And I think it's very clear that it's, whether it's useful and whether it's beneficial and so on, is really not for me to determine. I can tell you what our experience has been. I can give you some statistics, which I'll do, but I can't tell you whether it's working or not. That's for the merchants and the public and for you to determine, it seems like to me. What I can tell you is that my observation is that EPD has, has enforced the downtown public safety zone in a, in a pretty good way, in the sense that they've been, they've used their discretion and they've had focused enforcement. There, there are a lot of cases that where an exclusion could be requested and exclusion isn't requested. They, and that was part of what we were concerned about when we went into it. And that is, are you going to try to sanitize downtown or are you going to try to really look at the people who are causing the problems? And my experience has been, and the other judges as well, has been that the focus has been on the people who have caused the problems. It hasn't been a shotgun approach. It's, instead, it's been, as I say, very focused. So if you look at the statistics from October, the end of October of '08, which we're coming on almost two years now, we've had only 11 requests for exclusions before there's a hearing. And I find that to be encouraging. That's one of the parts of the ordinance that I wasn't horribly enthusiastic about. I mean, I think as a lawyer, judge, there's something called due process and it's, something doesn't happen until you get a chance to contest it. So I'm pleased that we've only had 11 of those in almost two years. We have had 66 requests for the 90-day exclusion and we've had, 42 of those have been granted and 24 have not been granted. So I think, I think that, that demonstrates the court's independence here where we're not rubber stamping these requests. Some of these that haven't been, haven't been granted have been mistakes in terms of getting the paperwork filed on time and so on. And we just don't, we don't give any second chances. I mean, it's either the way it's supposed to be as per the ordinance or it isn't. And so, as I say, about, I guess it's, it's more than a third have been no and 42 have been yes. We've had requests come back from circuit court where people are charged in circuit court and then convicted in circuit court for the one-year exclusion. The prosecutor's done a good job of looking at those and we've had 15 of those requests and the court doesn't have much discretion in those. That either is or is not and it's an appropriate request for an exclusion. And I think Mr. Markovic's doing a good job that way. In terms of requested hearings, we've only had 22 people ask for hearings. 16 of those hearings have been held and nine of them have been found for the city and granted the, extended, granted the exclusion and seven have been not granted. So I think it shows, you know, relatively focused enforcement. I think it shows that the court is in rubber stamping all these requests. And more than that, I don't think I can really tell you whether it's effective and it's working down on the street and making the downtown something that's more attractive. Well, I hope it is. As a citizen of the community, a longtime citizen, a lifetime citizen, I hope it is so that, and for the benefit of the people who'd like to have a downtown, like me. Just a comment about the amnesty. The amnesty idea was to eliminate the horrendous penalties that accrue when you don't pay a fine. Either when you don't show up initially or when it isn't paid later and then it goes to the credit company and they add a fee and then they add the interest. So the idea was to go back to square one and just go back to what it would have been had you been able to appear at the time. When there was an announcement about this, there was a letter to the editor saying that, you know, it wasn't fair because we were giving people who hadn't shown up a better deal than people that did. That's not the case. I want to be really clear about that. All we did was take away these penalties and that made, you know, that took them down to half what they were. So all of these, the bad things happen when you don't come to court, traffic violations as well as other cases, of course. So that was the idea. It wasn't revenue generating, that wasn't what I had in mind. What I had in mind was clearing up their driving record so they could get a license so they could go out and be employed, continue to be employed, or find a job. It's really tough in today's world to do that without a license. So I'm really happy that over 300 people got their licenses cleared out of it. That's, that's a good thing. In terms of technology, I think Judge Leonard certainly talked about that in terms of where we are vis-à-vis the state. I can tell you that we're, I don't think the other municipal courts in the state have, are even on the board here. But keep in mind, we are by far the largest municipal court in the state. We're kind of like a quasi-state court in certain ways and in terms of our volume. There was a comment in the report about the city's budget and the court having survived those budget issues. I think the city manager's office, the execs and the city employees and everybody really did an unbelievable job trying to deal with that, with that shortfall. And I recognize that we're going to have to share in the pain. I mean, nobody's immune from that. It can't, you can't be. I do think, of course, we're the most important part of the city, but, you know, there are some other technical who have something to say about that. And, but I, I do think that we should recognize that in terms of the general working staff, we lost one full-time, one three-quarter time, one half-time, one quarter-time. We lost a full-time collections clerk in a lead worker position. We lost a half-time parking clerk and we lost a full-time supervisor. So we're not in the position to lose anything more and we're not in a position to have EPD ramp up enforcement to 2006 levels. We couldn't handle it. They know that. We talk with them all the time and, and we, we chat about those issues. So as far as I know, that isn't going to happen, but there is the downtown public safety zone initiative and there may be more cases. We don't know how many are going to come from that, but I'm, I'm confident we can, that we can handle that. I know also that the courts are losing, we're, we're in that turnover that I watched EPD go through where the people got to their 30-year mark and they're gone. And then there are this, there's an influx of new people and I know how difficult that is. I saw EPD go through it and that's kind of what's happening to us, too. We're, we're losing people that have been there for 25, 30 years. It's not an easy job. I mean, there are a lot of i's to dot and t's to cross and so on. So I think the next two years is going to be a challenge. You're going to have less, less experienced employees. And again, it goes to whether we can handle increased filings without increased help. And the answer, I think, is pretty clearly no. There was a mission about the court facility. You know, that thing is so inadequate. I just got, actually, a judge's chambers. After 30-some years, we have actual judges' chambers where you can shut the door, the clerks don't come in and out, in and out, in and out. There's privacy, you can negotiate, so on. Judge Leonard just saw it and I think, I think it was, I was lucky he didn't fall over out of amazement because he's seen that little working office we have with two judges in and it's, but that's the only good news. We still have a tiny second courtroom, far from adequate. We need a third courtroom. The jury space is, is really an embarrassment. It's really an embarrassment to ask people to come down and cram them into this tiny little space, but it's all we really have. And I guess one of the things that really bothers me about the court being in this earthquake-challenged facility is we require people to come down here. You don't come down here, we issue a warrant, you go to jail. And you know, it's not the safest facility in downtown Eugene. And I know, you all know that. And I think that with the police thing coming together, I think that, you know, the next step of now, okay, what are we going to do in City Hall? Are we going to retrofit it? Are we going to move? What are we going to do? Tough decisions, I understand that, but I'm looking forward to what that decision may be. The jail space, I think there's been a lot of talk about that already today. I think you know that at the present time, those 10 beds that we thought we were going to have with the initiative don't exist. They need to exist. And Springfield has a nasty reputation. It's not a good place to go and spend time. And what I, the feedback I get from defendants who have been there is, I'm never going back there. Well, it's not that they're tortured, but they're sure not pampered. So my view is less days in Springfield are going to be more effective than more days in Eugene jails just to go, okay, knock it off, don't go downtown and do that anymore. Here's a couple of days to think about it. I'm not a big fan of long-term jail days, but I think in short gulps, and particularly over in Springfield, we may have not only more jail space, but more effective jail space. There's been, been issue, there's been an issue raised about, should we be charging people more? Should the fines be higher? And my answer is no, obviously. And for a couple of reasons. Other courts impose full assessments and surcharge on a minor traffic case. And when they do that, they add $100 on top of the fine, more than $100 on top of the fine. We reduce, the difference between us and other courts is we reduce those charges, those fees that go to the county, go to the state, et cetera. And we reduce them to 40 instead of 102 or 115, that sort of thing. And in today's economy, that seems to me to be the reasonable thing to do. And I'll, and I'll say, we've gone up $30 this year and, you know, I did that reluctantly, but I did it knowing, you know, we have to sort of balance things. But to, to step up the cost of a traffic, traffic infraction to a level that I think is unfair is not what I think the city wants or what the city council wants. I mean, it's an issue of basic fairness and a recognition of the economy we've got. To the associate judges, to answer George's question, I choose the associate judges. When I have room for them, I will ask the prosecutor for input. Hey, do you see anybody out there you think might be an appropriate candidate? I'll ask the defense attorney, Dan Neal, that. I'll probably ask Judge Leonard that or have many times in the past. I'll ask Judge Bearden that, both because they have the experience with the city court. And then we'll make a decision. And then after that decision, there'll be a period of time where it takes a long time to find out whether a person's going to be a good judge or not. And I, I think we've got good judges. I think we have two issues that arise in the associate judge arena. The first is scheduling. From the staff perspective, we have judges, a couple of judges who are extremely schedule-challenged. And they're schedule-challenged because they do work at juvenile court. And juvenile court is not like other courts. In other courts, you know you have a motion on this day, you have a trial on this day, you have a court appearance, plenty of advance notice. In juvenile court, it's on demand. Your, your client has been picked up, they're incarcerated, it's 4 o'clock in the afternoon, you're going to have a hearing at 9 o'clock. Those kinds of things are not issues that they can work around very well. And so while it appears to staff that there's a constant juggling here, and that's true, the bottom line that to me is not whether there's a juggling, but the bottom line is, what do those people do when they're in court and are they making the effort to be there? And I think clearly they're making a great effort to be there. And I also think clearly they're making good decisions. So that's the first issue you have with the associate judges. We've certainly talked about it. We're doing what we can to, to change that. But it's not too changeable, frankly. That brings us to adding another judge. There's reference to that in the, in the, I've added Don Dement, who is a longtime respected attorney. He's practiced for 42 years. You're going to find he's universally respected by the bar and by the other judges and I think, I think it'd be a great hire. And so Don is now training to join us. And, you know, he's at that point that I got to where, you know, you've just kind of had enough of practicing law and you'd like to do something else and this is something he'd really like to do. So I think he's going to, I think he's going to do a good job for us. The second issue, back to that, is there's the perception that one of our judges is prone to rule for the defense, that, that it's, the police officers aren't getting a fair ruling and that the prosecutors aren't getting a fair shape. Is that true or not true? I don't know the answer to that. I intend to find that out. You know, you do have to be balanced and you do want the people who appear in front of you to feel like they weren't discriminated against. And the people who appear in front of you include not only the defendants, of course, but they include the prosecutor and the, and the police officers. I think what I have is I've got a judge who talks a little bit more than he probably should. And I think he also cares very much about people having a fair day in court. So when the officer comes in and the defendant comes in, I think he's prone to help out the defendant and the officer's thinking, why? By asking questions or by maybe interjecting and being more an active participant in the trial than maybe you should. But I think it's well-intentioned and I do think that, that if the issue of fairness goes, I think it's, I think he's a fair guy, but I think he's got to watch how he presents himself so that you don't have this perception of, wow, we can't get a fair trial here. That's not what this court is about. So it's, believe me, it's something that's foremost in my, on my schedule. And one of the, you know, this is the last time I'm going to do this. This is my last evaluation. My goal here is to physically see the court, see the court physically in a better space, to, to go through the transition with the employees and to leave behind a very strong bench that can carry on what we've done and hopefully come up with new ideas and new things and, you know, take it beyond. You've got Judge Maury waiting and none of these complaints had to do with her. She is. She is doing a terrific job managing the jail and especially mental health court. You know, I feel really good about having her in that position, but I know I need to strengthen the rest of the program and I'm not going to leave behind a weak bench. So for that, that's my goal. In talking about the process, the idea of having more people have input, I think on its face is a good idea, but I think what you're going to find is, they're not going to really know that it was me or that it was somebody else. They're going to know it was a female, okay? Maybe they can describe it that way. But, you know, I think you're going to get your best input from your defense attorneys and I was encouraged that 17 of them responded this time. And I think you're also going to get it from the interpreters and I would hope more interpreters would respond next time. I do think that it's -- the survey's a little out of balance. You've got half of the responses are from EPD officers and, you know, in theory, they're represented by the prosecutor and then you've got the defense attorneys. So, I mean, if you look at the balancing of it, you know, I guess I did okay with EPD, but I do think that it should be a balanced evaluation. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any, you know, questions that you've got.
Thank you, Judge. I appreciate your last comment about the balance and we'll have to take a look and see if we can build that balance up a bit.
We use our customer satisfaction survey a little bit to try to do that, you know, but to try to go back and access specific people who've had specific experiences and enough of them to really come to a conclusion, I think is going to be a challenge.
Just wanted to really quickly, because for the folks who watch this or track what we do here, in the survey, you people, those who participated were asked about your legal knowledge and ability and judicial role and you had a very 87.9 strongly agree and agree on your legal knowledge and ability and judicial role, a very high case in courtroom management, very high case and there were some other equal, equality, fairness and integrity, very high. So I feel that we have a sense of how you're regarded in the community from every point and appreciate very much your service on our behalf and thank you very, very much for that.
That was a terrific job.
I'm glad you think so.
I said that before, you get up every day and you get to go to work and do what you hope is the right thing and there aren't that many of those jobs around, so I still enjoy it very much.
That's good because it's hard.
I don't think it's hard. I don't think it's hard. I don't think it's a hard -- I mean, there's some things with the budget and things like that, things that are kind of out of my control, but the things that are in my control, it's not hard.
And I want to really say thank you for the amnesty initiative. I think that given the times that we're in and the stress that's on a lot of people and the economic stress on people being able to provide for their families, I thought that was a very humane thing to do.
Well, and it may be appropriate to do it again.
Good.
So we're going to look at that.
Good. Andrea and then Alan. Andrea?
I do have a couple of follow-up questions, Your Honor.
Okay, I'll put you in there, in the queue.
So I have a couple of questions and then I kind of want to pick your brain about the safety zone. So do you think that the lower levels of our citations make it more palatable for people to pay their fees?
Mm-hmm, I do.
Do you? Because my husband recently got a ticket in Springfield and they have nothing like that and there's a lot of places that don't. So do you think that that's something that we should continue to do?
Yes.
Okay. So about the safety zone, did you use anything like that in the past before we passed that ordinance?
Wasn't there the prostitution zone?
Okay, but so just in generalization, does there need to be a set geographic area in order for you to exclude somebody from that area?
Yes. Yeah, there needs to be clear definition of that. And I didn't mention, I probably should have, you know, there are people who need to go back in there for certain purposes and of course, they can do that under the terms of the ordinance and they can also ask for a variance if it doesn't fall within that. And we've had a few requests for variances and I think they've always been allowed, they've always been well-reasoned.
Okay. And then I appreciate your comments about the Springfield jail. I've heard anecdotally that there's, that it is definitely a bare
Tough jail.
A bare-bones jail, that there's two meals a day, no air conditioning and nothing to read and no televisions. So I don't know if that's true or not. I hopefully will never find out by personal experience, but I, you know, I'm kind of 50/50 on that. You know, if somebody breaks the law, then they break the law and they should, you know, if you feel it's warranted that they spend time in jail, that's fine. I don't think it should be the best experience of their life. You know, it should be a sentinel event that they go, "Oh, I don't want to do this anymore" and move on and hopefully, you know, take advantage of an opportunity to do something different, but I do have some concerns about that. But I am a spendthrift and so, you know, if we could save $30,000 a bed, that's something that's not penny, so give us some conversation.
You know, I think, and I agree with you to a certain extent, you know, if you're going to go in for 30 days, that's really a tough 30 days. But if you're going in for two, three, maybe even four, I think it gets the point across.
Thank you, Judge, for your time. I do appreciate the years that you've contributed to this community and this job. Alan?
Judge, I think you've done an excellent job and the court seems pretty well-run. Some issues around the associate judges, some of the comments are a little disconcerting in the survey results. So you talked about strengthening your bench. Do you do evaluations of the judges on a regular basis? You talked about what you were going to leave behind. Do you have a plan for that?
I think, I don't do full-scale evaluations like this that you do with me. I think what I'm going to do is a self-evaluation, sort of see what the perception, what each is perception is. And you'll recall that I do a self-evaluation for you. That's kind of one of my thoughts. And then obviously, I just have to sit down and really talk to some people. You know, like I said, it's a scheduling issue. We'll do what we can do with that, but I think that the other part, I just think it's a, I think it's a perception that needs to change, frankly.
What do you mean it's a perception?
Well, the perception that a police officer and/or prosecutor isn't getting their fair day in court, that perception isn't okay. It has to change in one way or another and I don't know what that way will be, but I can tell you that it won't be that way for much longer.
Yeah, okay. When you noodle on this and come up with it, I hope you'd share your plan about how to strengthen your bench with the council.
Well, I think to bring Don in, Don Dement is a very, very large step. We're going to have, I'm going to leave at some point and Don Loomis is also highly respected and there are no negative comments about Don. Don will probably do the same in a couple of years. And so then, you know, the question is, who's going to be left and what's their role going to be and who's going to move into my role and who's going to move into Mary's role and so on. So that's the idea, is to look down the road and not all of a sudden go, "Oh, well, now what? We don't have anybody prepared to do any of these things." Because it takes, in my experience, a solid two years before you really know whether this person's got it or they don't have it. This is not an easy court to operate in. From a paperwork perspective, there's just a tremendous amount of it and we have a lot of little rules that are designed to kind of make sure that the playing field is level, judge to judge. That's one thing that's really important to me. So, you know, there are a lot of restrictions and rules that you've got to know how to operate.
I think in the whole council, I'm cognizant of your staffing constraints and it's part of the conundrum we have about our public safety system in that we add more cops and they get more arrests, we don't have the court capacity and the jail capacity and it's this kind of vicious circle about how do you deal with it when pieces of it are substantially underfunded and well-aware of that. Just wanted to let you know that. Could you share those statistics through an email to us?
The staff statistics?
No, about the exclusion zone.
Oh, sure, yeah, I got the staff. Okay, so the statistics are, request for exclusion before hearing, 11.
What does that mean, before hearing?
Well, that means that there are some people that the prosecutor, particularly the prosecutor, they go through and feels like, we don't want to wait for a good reason to exclude this person before they have a hearing. Those are the ones that I don't, I'm not very excited about, but I am glad that they're only, we're 11 in.
Right. That was supposed to be very likely.
The next ones are the requests for the 90-day exclusion and that exclusion is granted before you have a trial, but after you have a hearing. There were 66 requests, there were 42 granted, there were 24 denied. And the next one is, how many people of the people who, if they wanted to have an exclusion, how many requested a hearing? And 22 requested a hearing. 16 hearings were actually held and I suspect that's because six people didn't show up and nine were granted and seven were denied.
And your comments in the memo said you thought it was an effective tool?
Well, no, I want, that's not my memo. I want to back away from that because I don't know if it's an effective tool. I don't know if it's working or not. That's for the, for you and the merchants and the red hats and the, you know, other people to say, "Hey, are we, is this, are we getting what we want out of this?" I don't think it's for me, other than being a citizen and walking down there and seeing what I see. I don't think, I don't think it's for me to have it, to express an opinion in that regard. I don't know.
In supporting our recent focus.
Yeah, the term they used in the report, it might not be your term, was a useful sanction. Know what that meant?
That's my term.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did write the report.
Right, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. The other question I had is about the physical needs about moving to a new court. My expectation is we're going to move out of this building. I don't want to invest in this building. So when we do that, what do you see as the needs for the court in terms of what the space would look like, either an existing space that we could adapt or, and what's the possibility of the feds? That seems like it's on again, off again every other week.
Yeah, you know, and we looked at that really hard about two or three years ago and spent money doing it and kind of figuring out how to reconfigure it and we've got, I mean, we've got all, we've got six offices out of Judge Hogan's one office and, you know, I mean, we had two courtrooms out of that courtroom and, you know, and made things in kind of our scale, but then, you know, they, I don't know. I get the feeling it is a moving target, but I don't get the feeling that it's still a possibility.
You don't?
I don't. I don't hear that anymore.
So we would need a different physical space than that?
Yeah, I think, I think that's the idea, is that moving, I don't know. I think that what I've heard is that you're moving more down into the core.
Yeah. Do you think it's a good idea to have it associated with the City Hall or as a standalone?
I don't think it matters. The one thing you have here is, you know, we have a certain clientele that may not be the most attractive clientele. So you've got to kind, I mean, you've got to kind of sort of isolate us a little bit, it seems to me. For instance, if you have a building and you're using elevators and you're going to the second floor, third floor, that sort of thing, you may not want to do that. You may want to have the court be somewhere else.
Yeah, I noticed the overflow goes out into the courtyard and a little, almost a little gauntlet, you know.
The problem is, the attorneys don't have a place to talk to their clients and have a confidential communication.
Right, I've seen attorneys out sitting on the pond.
So you've got the prosecutor trying to do that with the officers, you've got the defendants and their attorneys who are out there talking to witnesses. I mean, it's not a good thing. You need to have hopefully interseparation.
The customer survey data is excellent. We don't have a page number, but 89% said the staff was very professional, professional when they treated you, but these are customers.
Yeah.
Or clients. And the, well, they took the time to help you, 88%.
Yeah.
Defendants, right. 88% they took time to help you. So I think those are very high numbers, so hats off to you for that. This financial information page, I didn't quite understand. I couldn't tell if it was additive cumulative or all of these were separate. It says financial information on it?
Is it close to that?
It's towards the end of the survey, right at the beginning. Keep going.
One more page.
Right here.
Yeah, that one. I think Jeff Perry could probably talk to this a lot better than I could.
Okay.
Time's up, by the way.
That, I mean, that really speaks to revenue that the court is bringing in. So you can see the fines and fees that are imposed through FY06 through FY09, community service credit, that's credit granted in lieu of paying a fine and the same is jail, so somebody can serve time in jail instead of paying their fine. And so you have your net imposed fines and fees to the general fund, so that's actually the revenue that we see. So the first category is what's imposed, that's not necessarily what we collect. Obviously, we have some accounts that just don't pay and then we have fines and fees that go to the general fund. Below that, animal violations to the general fund. And then the CAA is the court-appointed attorney reimbursement to the general fund. So there's a small portion of money that gets reimbursed to the city from our contracted court-appointed attorney. Total receipts, refunds, that's just the actual, so that's going to be not just fines and fees that come into the general fund, but that's fines and fees and payments that come in from the collection agency. So we do get a lot of revenue from our collection agency from old, old accounts and they work those for years and years and years. There's refunds, you know, we have fines that we refund. There's actually, and I doubt this includes parking, but there's a lot of parking refunds that we issue as well. And then you can see the collection receipts. At the very bottom, turnover to the state and county, Judge Allen made reference to that, those are assessments that are imposed, where we impose on top of a sanction and so that's the revenue we pay to those agencies. Victim restitution is, you know, what the court collects and pays back to the victim and then we have the, you know, the outside collection agency amount, that's just the amount of money that we send on to collections annually.
1.9 million out of 4.2?
Yeah, it's a, it's a big number. So usually those accounts, just to clarify to you, after 60 days, if we don't have any activity, no one's going to pay, then they'll get referred on. But we have an internal collections office. We have an employee that works very hard to set up reasonable payment agreements with individuals, try to, you know, they'll even renegotiate and so on to make sure that they're paying, but sometimes they just, you know, they just.
I want to move on. We have Betty and then George Polling and then Chris and George Brown. Betty?
Thank you. I was in that jury room once. You're right, it's inhumane.
And the mayor was as well.
I was. I knew they weren't going to use me.
I'm thinking about having everybody come down sometime.
I had to sit there for an hour, I think.
Yeah.
Wow, that was punishment for something.
Yeah, it's not right.
No, it isn't. I wondered, well, some comments. I, it's concerned about being fair to the defendant as being fair to the prosecutor.
Oh, I think so.
You said something about judges aren't, sometimes aren't fair to the prosecutors.
No, I'm saying that there's a complaint about one judge and the perception is that that one judge is not balanced so that everybody has the same chance for their day in court, which is not the right perception to have. And I would comment that, you know, if I, if I think about the judges that I've appeared in front of, federal and state and so on as a practicing attorney, you know, I think we all have, as lawyers, you all kind of characterize certain judges as being, well, you know, this way or that way. And I don't think you can have a bench, a circuit court bench or this kind of bench where everybody is viewed as being on the same level and you're just as happy with one as another. It's something you strive for, but I'm not sure that it's attainable.
I was just thinking, it's the defendant that's really in danger in the courtroom, not the prosecutor.
Oh, yeah, for sure, yeah. Well, there's called, this, this thing called a burden of proof, and we're very serious about the burden of proof.
I really like the amnesty. I wish that we never had fines go up, because if people can't afford to pay them in the first place, then they certainly can't afford to have extra fees.
Yeah, it's, it's a state law. It's what I do, you see, is I suspend a portion of these assessments on the condition that the fine be paid on time per the payment agreement. And so when they don't do that, then they have to be added back in. All of the things that I've suspended, that I've taken away, are legally required by state law to be added back in. Or, if they don't appear, then it's a guilty by default, and I don't have any ability to do that suspending, and so all of those fees go on top of the fine. It's, it's something that, that neither you nor I can have any control over.
It's, it's the way people become homeless, partly.
It can be.
Your E-Web bill, if you don't pay it, goes up, and you, there are so many ways that we cause people to sink deeper into poverty.
That's why we think, Road Crew or Community Service, and that's why we suggest it on multiple occasions every day of the week, to say, "Hey, you know, this may work for you. This may get you out of this hole that you're in, and get you moving, get, to get these things out of your way." And frankly, I encourage Road Crew, 'cause it's fast, Community Service, there's no fee, and you can really do some damage. Now, you know, we have the Community Service downtown now, the one in the morning, the really early one in the morning.
Yeah.
And we give double credit for that. So that's a $20 an hour credit, if you wanna go down there and work from 6:00 to 9:00.
I would choose that.
And we give $10 credit on Community Service, and we give $100 a day on Road Crew. So, you know, we're, and if you have more cases and more garbage to clean up, then I'm gonna give you an even better rate. If you show me that you'll go down and do the Road Crew for a case or two, then I invite you to come back and talk about a better rate for the rest of them, so you can get this, get your driver's license cleared.
Oh, thank you. I've always thinking of myself in that situation. Like, I always thought I would probably be homeless. That's something I think a lot of women think. I'm curious, how, to judge the judges, do you go sit in their courtroom sometimes?
Yes, I do. And I like what I see, frankly.
Are they scared when you come in?
I don't think so. A teacher.
Yeah, that's a teacher, that's a teacher.
So I just wanna, I used to be, I'm not through yet. I know, but I'm gonna say something here, that I, we have three more people in the queue, and I'm really wanting us to give, for them to have time to, to make their comments and ask their questions.
I'm usually pretty fast. Now you made me lose my train of thoughts, so. So I, as Alan said, yeah, I was chair of an English department, and I know that the teachers would kind of, really, watch them teach. The animal thing, I noticed that most of, that the defendants' animal cases are hardly ever decided in favor of the defendant. Is that right? I can't find the page, Dallas.
Frankly, I was surprised to see that the animal filings were up, and I commented to Mr. Perry about that today.
I don't know what.
I would make this, I don't, I don't see it here in front of me right away, but I would make the comment that, okay, here.
639 out of 658 guilty.
Yeah, it looks to me like you'd had, in, in 09, you had 26 trials, and 19 of them were not guilty or dismissed, which would mean to me that seven times the defendant was convicted, and 19 times they were.
That's a different place to put it, but thank you, that's, that's all. I'll stop.
You know, it used to be that, and I don't hear it much anymore, but the people would come in and complain, basically to complain and vent about the dog control person, and their abuse of discretion, in their view, for issuing them the citation. So we had a lot of hearings where they just wanted to complain about that, which happens in trial cases, I mean, in traffic cases also.
George Polling, you have a question?
Yes, real quick, Judge Allen, back to the associate judges. I appreciate the way that you vet the applicants with the, the other folks in our community. My question is, though, is, well, there's actually three, and I'll just get them out real quick. How many associate judges do we have? How are they compensated? And the final part of that is, is it, education, what type of education background experience are you looking for in these people when you are sorting the associate judges?
There are five of them, George, in addition to me. I'm looking for extensive experience as an attorney, and an experience in doing, you know, some kind of trial work, and probably criminal law, either as a prosecutor or a defense attorney. And I'm looking for somebody who seems to sorta have it, and I don't know how to define it to you any more than that, somebody who seems to have the ability to, to make good decisions, and to have a judicial temperament. In terms of the actual, how much training experience, it's more, it's more a hands-on experience as an attorney, and a reputation that they have earned with other judges, and with other, with their contemporaries.
And compensation?
Oh, the compensation is ridiculously low. It's $100 an hour. We are independent contractors, we don't have any PERS, we don't have any healthcare, we don't have any of those kinds of things. They're paid $100 an hour, which a couple of years ago was less than the starting rate billed to the city by the city attorney's office before we had in-house. So a rookie attorney with harangue long was billing at that point like 100 and, I'm gonna say 120 to the city, when I'm taking experienced attorneys, you know, and, and asking them to make this work for their schedule for $100 an hour.
And where does that fund, where does that money come from to pay those wages?
Just the general fund.
General fund, okay. All right, and just one last comment. Judge Allen, I appreciate all the years that you've dedicated to this, to this service, you know, it speaks well of you, where we are right now as a municipal court, and I've always admired your ability to not only think about the laws, but about the compassion for the defendants, as well as being able to think outside the box to try to come up with a better way of doing what you do so well. And I just, I wanna thank you for all the years of service to our community.
Thank you.
Chris?
Thanks, I'll, I'll try to go quickly as well. I also wanna express my appreciation for all the work you've done. It's too bad this is our last evaluation, because it means that if you retire, then we have to find somebody to step into your shoes, and that's gonna be a very hard thing to do. And I, and I really appreciate your desire to leave it better than you found it, 'cause that's a, that's a, that's a real quality. I understand completely your desire not to express an opinion about whether or not an exclusion zone is working. You really wanna stick just, just to the facts. So I would, wanna ask you a couple of questions about those facts.
Sure.
Based on your, kind of what you see. When we, when we enacted the exclusion zone, part of, at least my concern, was that it was sure to try to deal with behavior rather than condition. You didn't wanna exclude people because of the way they looked, or because they were poor, or because they were homeless. And I think there was a great deal of fear that that, those conditions might become reasons for exclusion. So I'm, in the cases that have come before you, and I'm, I'm thinking that the way the ordinance was initially set up was to try to prevent this, but what I would wanna hear from you is actually seeing it with your own eyes. The cases that are coming before you for the exclusion zone, would you characterize them as being really legitimately for behaviors, or do you see cases, whether they're dismissed or not? Are you seeing cases coming before you that, that could really be interpreted as the way people look, or the fact that they're homeless, or, or something that could be conditional, or are they really primarily behavior?
Behavior.
Okay.
Now, keep in mind, I don't see every case. You know, there are six of us.
Right.
But I'll, I'll see probably the majority of them. And they're, I think they're based on behavior.
When a case for an exclusion zone violation, when a request is either upheld or dismissed, is there a trend in terms of what kinds of ones are being upheld versus the ones that are dismissed? Is there a kind of a basis for why cases would be dismissed when they're requested?
I think oftentimes they're not, they're dismissed because of EPD not getting it filed on time, or, for instance, we've had situations where some of the newer officers may not be as familiar with the list for the 90-day exclusion.
Okay, okay.
And so they'll ask for one that doesn't, isn't on the list, and, you know, those kinds of things.
So would it be fair to say, then, that you're providing an additional level of oversight that if somebody should request an exclusion, and it's really not an appropriate one, for whatever reason, you're providing a layer that ensures it doesn't go any further? Is that fair, or is that really overstating?
Well, I think that's.
That's a, that's a fair enough assessment. So with this exclusion zone in place, the way the structure's set up is, there are along-the-way opportunities for it not to be misused?
You know, and if it was starting to be misused, I'd be the first person to pick up the phone and call Dan Barkovick and say, "We, you know, we need to sit down, you, me, EPD, and talk about what, what's going on here." And we, we also do that proactively, when I asked to have a conversation with Sergeant Fitzpatrick and, and some of the people from EPD with this, with this new initiative, saying, "Okay, what's, what's gonna change here? Is there gonna be change in the focus of what you're looking for?" And the answer is no. And I, and I liked, there were a number of things that I learned, all of which gave me a, a certain measure of confidence in the way that it was gonna be used. I was very encouraged by that meeting.
So a fear that might be expressed, that the exclusion zone was, metaphorically speaking, a blank check to go in and sanitize downtown. In terms of what you're seeing coming before you, and things that you're actually passing on, even if, even if that were happening at the initial level, it's not making it through the system and being upheld?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, that's.
You know, this exclusion zone is something that you, as a judge, I think you look at very carefully, and you wonder, and you really kinda ask yourself, "Is this what the city council was after, or is this not what the city council was after?" And, you know, I think I have a pretty good sense of what the city council wants, and I don't think it's to sanitize downtown, and I'm not seeing it used that way.
Great, great. And it actually was an interesting thing in terms of being here on days when folks are going through the court system, and in a way, if they don't look like me, or they're different, or they're whatever, you know, that's actually okay.
Of course it is. It's your team.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, really. It's more than okay.
Yeah.
It's the way it ought to be.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
George Brown?
I've got a couple of questions. One, one about the exclusion zone, but real quick, it's just a statistical question, 'cause we're not exactly sure when we'll get the report, and we'll pass through the police commission, you know, the final report. But I, let's see, there, there were only 11 requests, pre-haring requests for exclusions that were granted. Then do we add on to the 66 requests for 90-day, oh, no, the 42 that were granted, 90-day exclusions? There'd be 53.
Yeah, there would've been 11 granted, and then there would've been the opportunity for a hearing. And so I think that falls probably into the requested hearings.
Okay.
How many were upheld and how many weren't. But that, that's just a short, temporary exclusion until you actually have a hearing on the issue.
Right.
Frankly, I don't even recall the last one of those that I saw.
Okay. Well, I'm seeing maybe around 50 or 60 total that have been granted, and then, this is from October 8th, I mean, '08, up to when?
Up to June?
Well, the.
June?
Yeah. Just, I think they're.
Oh, I think they may be.
True. We just ran it just the other day.
Oh, okay. Right up to the day that you ran it.
The 27th of July.
Oh, I'm not kidding, okay. All right. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to kinda have a, have a rough idea of the total. Then my second question is, we don't know what's gonna happen to this building, although I guess we're gonna be talking about it when we come back from our break, I think is like one of the first things on our agenda. And so even once we decide whether we're gonna move out, or knock this building down and build a new, whatever, we don't know what we're gonna do. We're probably gonna be here for a while, nonetheless, until a new space is prepared. So I'm just curious, you, you've probably had discussions, what, what additional square footage will you need, do you know?
If we could expand into HR and create a, you know, get it, the two courtrooms and get some meeting space, I don't know exactly how mu, certainly there's more space there than we would probably need for all of HR. But if you could get that, then you could really, you could have a better functioning court, you could have a jury room that made sense.
Right.
People could have privacy meeting with their attorneys, and you could have three courtrooms, which you'd have, that's what we need.
Okay.
And courtrooms, that's, that small second courtroom is, you know, I mean, is it half as wide as this room, and maybe two-thirds as long? I mean, it's really not a, you're just, just too intense, it's too close.
Well, yeah, my, my, I think my point is, I mean, when the police do move out from here, of course, that won't be for a while, there will be a lot of extra space in this building.
There's a lot of space, yeah.
I think there'll probably be enough space, make sure.
Yeah, oh, yeah, you could do that.
And then, you know, and hopefully by that time, we'll know what we're gonna do, in the long term. And then, let's see. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
I just have one word to say about, you know, and I don't know, my other counselors, you know, this is, I'm speaking for all of us, I don't know if I should be. And I don't know if this is something that's safety-wise, the wisest thing, but, you know, our council office meeting room is often empty.
Right.
And if there was somebody who wanted to walk people in that room, they'd be more involved.
We'll confer from there.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, exactly. There's some discussion about that.
Yeah, well, please feel free to let us know if you're gonna do that, because then, you know, we would, we, I probably am one of the few people that uses it, so. Please don't. Come on over.
Thank you.
Good point. I just would, very quickly, wanna say that I talked to the federal folks about the federal building, and they are fully utilizing it, so, and they have no intention of not fully utilizing it. So that's kind of where.
Not as a court. You're using it as office space.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And I did wanna tell you that I shared with council that we, I got an email this week from a person who got two summonses to court, and had to write us to tell us what a great, how nice she was treated. Of course, she didn't wanna be there for the summons.